Five oh five. Again, thank you for your patience. Um, first order of business is the pledge to the flag. Finding it.
By allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first, uh, agenda item, old business number of preschool classrooms. So, um, I, sorry? I did ask, um, for an update. I'm just looking to see quickly if I got an email with any updates. Okay. Um, right now, it, it appears that there is going to be one, uh, one potential child coming off of early intervention, um, that will be added to, uh, the preschool class number. Um, other than that, um, we still know that there are some families that have outstanding bills. Um, I was looking to see if there was an update from either David or Jen about that, which there is not. So, I do not know if those new parents, if those parents have actually paid their bill or not.
How many kids we have now?
Um, we have, we have the same number that we, that we had before. Um,
Is that seventeen?
It's seventeen that I'm aware of, yeah.
And two on the waiting list.
Um, so there was one child that unenrolled, and so one child came off the waitlist.
Yeah, that person's already off. This is seventeen and two on the waitlist still, with that person unenrolled.
So, that's different information than Jen Colkeen expressed to me. The, the email that I got, it, it, uh, made it sound like they just swapped those two kids. So, one enrolled,
Correct.
one was taken off the waitlist. There's one on the waitlist.
No, two. There's two on the waitlist. The child that had from reach is also in.
So, I need you to go to the microphone because they won't be able to hear you. Can you just go to the microphone and say what you're gonna say?
There is, there are seventeen kids.
Hold down to you.
Seventeen kids enrolled, and there's two on a waitlist. That's also taking out that student that unenrolled. So, there would have been twenty total.
So, okay. So, that's, all I'm gonna say is that's different than what we, than what we were emailed then, um, because
I mean, I made a dojo. They're all on that besides the two that are on, um, a waiting list because I don't know if they're allowed to attend. But there's seventeen total.
Okay.
That are in and two on a list that are, I have on my roster.
Um, okay. All right. So,
Just a question.
Go ahead.
Uh, can you stay right there, please?
Mm-hmm.
What's your recommendation since you're the preschool teacher?
Two, two classrooms.
Two classrooms. You recommend two classrooms?
Yes.
Thank you.
Could I speak at all to that as well, or?
Um, up to the chair, yeah.
Yes, yes. I'm getting, I'm sorry, I'm getting the information. It's coming in.
I just wanted to take just a minute just to speak because I'm the speeching pathologist. I work with the preschool.
Come right to the microphone.
Is this on? I'm not sure if this is really on.
It's on for the people.
Oh, okay, okay.
Not in this audience, on the virtual audience.
Um, Mackenzie, as you're aware, we're about to administer our dial and our ESI. For those of you that don't know, those are our early screening tools, and they really look at concepts and language and motor. So, preschool's not in session yet, so we don't have that information. So, there's a subset of students we don't know about. But for the students that are enrolled, of the seventeen students that are currently enrolled, there are eight that right now have some level of concern, whether it's an IEP, whether it's some kind of tiered instruction or early intervening services. And, I mean, to me, that's concerning because it's not as simple as saying, oh, they're just like articulation. That would be actually easy if they were just articulation students. But these students are students that have speech-language difficulties that are often concomitant with other difficulties, whether it's motor, whether it's social, emotional, or early literacy. And so, my concern is that, that's almost fifty percent of the class, and we don't even know all of the students. So, when I think about the needs, I mean, I think there's so many benefits to having a small class. Like, these are, you know, really, it's an important age where there's a lot of brain development going on, and you have your obvious reasons where you get that one-on-one interaction with a teacher that's gonna help through like feeding and self-help and, and toileting and all of that. But then there's other things to consider as well. Like, what about the students that have like sensory overload, that need like less distractions? Or what about the students that need the modeling for like social communication or play, which is so important to learning about language and cognitive skills and motor skills? And that's how students are gonna learn how to like interact and negotiate and process their emotions. Um, all of those things are really important. And then I think about Samantha. She's reading a, a story with a, a class of almost twenty kids, trying to do a dialogic reading activity, which is not just her passively reading, but like a back-and-forth exchange. How often is she even gonna hear, like, some students? How, you know, are they gonna be able to give their opinion? Um, and then I just think about communication. Like, we really have to look at like where students are at. And not all of these students are coming to preschool ready yet to be verbal communicators, so we have to meet them where they're at. So, that might mean for some students, they have like augmentative alternative communication, and that's like a, a device, a full-featured communication system where it takes a lot of time and a lot of modeling. And while that's tedious, that's like what a child would need to progress. Or I think about a child that may have a hearing difficulty, and so they need a quieter environment, or a child that may need a teacher to use sort of fluency-enhancing strategies to help them speak. So, there's a lot of reasons. The most obvious to me is that a teacher is just really modeling grammar and syntax and vocabulary. Um, and I don't think it's any surprise that since the pandemic, there's more and more kids that have speech-language disorders, delays, social communication delays, emotional behavior, and those are also often like interwoven together. So, if a child's coming in with like a language delay, they're gonna be more at risk for literacies as they get older. So, let's put our investment like where they are right now, because, um, I really feel hopeful. I feel like we can meet these kids where they are. I feel like we absolutely can make progress with these students, but my confidence has definitely diminished if they're all gonna be in one class. So, I would really advocate for, for two classrooms.
Great, thank you.
Do we, oh, yeah. So, do we have to, if we've already voted, next line of business is we would only have to vote if we were changing anything, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
So, um, I am feeling after hearing from the teacher, hearing from other teachers that are working in that classroom, I think that was one of the things we wanted to know is what are those needs? What does that look like? What does that makeup look like? At least that's what I wanted to hear. Um, so I find that is super helpful. I do hear and really believe that we still need two preschool classrooms. So, I would recommend that we keep it the way that we have it currently. We should let, um, David know that he should move forward with that hiring process. Hopefully, those five applicants are still interested and that we have a strong applicant pool and just push it forward. So, that would be my recommendation.
Okay. I would also agree.
Yep.
I feel like flip-flopping back and forth so close to school, I feel like it's important that we stick with our original plan. And maybe next year, we take a look at this a lot sooner. I know this year was a little different. Um, but I think that if we track it a lot sooner and get, um, have some deadlines of when people or when students can enroll and, and get that information, I think that would be best moving forward for next year.
And Jen, I wanted to bring it up too during policy that we relook at our preschool policies and look at our procedures and just really fine-tune that so that we're not running into the same issue possibly next year or the year after of really looking at numbers, you know, setting deadlines, doing what we need to do to make sure that we're not in this predicament again.
Yeah, I mean, I will just say because I did the job, that's really the function of the early childhood coordinator. It's one of those, uh, kind of, uh, positions that is not noticed, um, but they do a lot of work. And that's really key role of the early childhood coordinator. Um, I do wanna hear from Mark, and I wanna hear from Eric, um, kind of what your opinion. We're taking, I'm gonna say an informal poll.
My census we've decided, and so we have a decision to go with two. And I haven't heard or found anything out from anybody saying to change that decision. Um, and the numbers, um, haven't dropped drastically, so we have a decision.
Okay. Eric?
She answered my question, so.
And you?
I was gonna say the same thing she said.
Okay.
Let's get two classrooms.
Excellent. Okay.
Do we have the room for two classrooms?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Well, the OT and PT are in there now, so they'll have to move to another.
They never switch.
No.
Because they call.
They told, they're told.
We're not gonna put them out here, so.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Yeah, I, I appreciate everybody's input. I think it, it's, uh, it's worth just kinda going through the motions just to make sure from a fiscal point of view and, um, you know, and that we've been thorough in this whole process. I agree that the process needs to be started a lot earlier and be tightened up so that we are not in this place again next year. Um, but I, I feel confident as well, um, with the fact that we have the numbers, the needs that we have, and knowing there's at least one more student coming from early intervention at some point in the year. Um, and we don't know those needs of that student yet. Um, so I think it, I think it makes sense that we continue with the two classrooms. Sounds like everybody here is in agreement. So, you're right that we don't have to vote it because that's what is on the table, so we can close that.
Are you gonna reach out to Jen and David and just let them know to continue to move forward?
Yeah. All right, so, uh, next new business, um, special education transportation. So, we have, um, been working since, when did you start this, Jen?
Um, I don't remember.
Late in winter, January, something like that? So, Jen started the process. I've kind of picked it up and continued, um, with it. We have a consultant, a transportation consultant, and we have, uh, located a van. Um, a vendor has come forward with a van. So, what we need to do is take a vote to fund the van, um, so a purchase order can be created, and our name can be put on that van as, as ours. Um, the total cost of the van is just about forty-six thousand. That includes the van and the upgrades that need to be done to make it compliant to be like a school van. Um, the, um, it's a brand-new van. It, um, it, uh, capacity is for seven children. We don't need seven children currently, but it's good to know we have some extra wiggle room there. Um, we have currently, our transportation costs for the year come in at a hundred and sixty-six thousand, five hundred and forty dollars every single year if our, if these children, um, need transportation every year. So, forty-six thousand dollars for a van plus obviously the cost of a driver seems like a pretty good bargain to me. Um, the town will be, um, taking the cost of the insurance and the fuel, so the school will be responsible for, obviously, yearly maintenance on the van, getting it inspected, eventually they'll need new tires and brakes and things like that. But, um, the town will cover the insurance and the fuel, which is really very nice. I mean, it, that's very generous. So, um, so, we have talked about, I've talked with the superintendent, uh, Caitlin and Karina about where to fund that from. There are several places that it can come from, um, one of which is that, um, listing of the, uh, grants that have not been expended yet. You received it. It's a, um, kind of a list with some highlighted, um, dollar amounts. So, in that list, um, that, those grants need to be, um, closed out so that they can come off the books. They were supposed to have been, um, uh, closed out, but for one reason or another, the money was not spent. Um, so, the town accountant certainly would like to clean this up, so that makes the most sense to me as a place to fund this van. There's more than enough money to fund it from there. Um, or the other option is to fund it from the line in the budget, um, knowing that we won't, uh, be using, um, the rest of that one-hundred-and-eighty-four that's actually in the budget currently, um, for the transportation. My, certainly my suggestion would be we take it out of the grant so that we can close out those accounts. But if people don't feel comfortable with that, the second option is the budget.
How close are we to lining up, um, a job description and a driver?
So, the job description, um, that was on Jen Colkeen's, um, list to do, so, uh, she is not here today. Um, so we will have to encourage her to move quickly with that. Um, and then as far as drivers, we've identified, um, at least one, I think, two potential drivers. Um, so, we do have people. We obviously can't offer them anything until we have this job description and then, and then clearly a van in place. Um, but two people have expressed interest. So, I feel like we're in a good spot.
Could we potentially hire both of them if that all worked out to be like an alternative or sub or?
Yeah.
Schedule?
Yeah, we would need a full-time and then, and then some sort of sub situation. Um, and I think going forward, even the suggestion was made to, um, potentially either, um, uh, join with the senior community center and the drivers that they have for their, um, FRTA bus and/or other Union Twenty-Eight schools, uh, with transportation needs to see if we can pool with that. Currently though, we would, you know, we would just, um, be taking this on as a Irving project, but down the line, we might, we might do that.
Do we need a motion?
We do. We need a motion for, um, to take the money. We have a quote, so I don't wanna give an, an exact dollar amount because this is only a quote, and I, and I don't want us to have the numbers be slightly off and then have to come back. But what we can do is make a motion to, um, to expend the money needed to buy the van. And then, once the final bill comes in, um, Caitlin can, you know, can pay it.
So, can I make a motion to, um, take upwards, what, forty-eight thousand? Does that cover it?
I would say fifty.
Fifty?
Just, just to be rounded up.
From unexpended, unexpended, uh, was it grants?
Yep.
Uh, first and out of the transportation line if necessary. Uh, for the purchases of the special education van.
We need a second?
Second.
Okay. And for the purpose of discussion, does anybody have any questions? I'm just gonna keep shifting because I'm stupid. I have a parent.
Questions?
No, but first I wanna hear if there's any questions from any of you.
Yeah.
I have my questions during. Okay. Nope? Okay.
I think it's a no-brainer to get it, but, uh, as far as pulling money from that.
Can you just tilt that upstairs?
As far as funding from that fund, is there any other places that money should go if you have money already allocated in the one-eighty-five or whatever it is? You could put towards that versus the fifty-five you said, and that other fund could go to something else. So, do you know if there's money, if there's a different project for that money?
So, the, um, I think what you're asking is the, the grants that, that Mark has, has made the motion for, are grants that have been on the books for several years. There is nothing, um, attached to those grants.
Okay.
They've just been kind of money left over.
Good question.
And that's why I think that's the best place to take it, because we can clean that up and, um, get those off the books. Anything else? All right, so, uh, motion and a second. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Great. I will let Caitlin know. She will create the PO, and then we'll get that over to the consultant to get to the vendor. Um, second item is create a subcommittee to investigate withdrawing from Union Twenty-Eight. It was phrased that way. I wanna make sure that it's clear though that, um, it would be solely a investigative subcommittee. Um, by creating this subcommittee, it, in no way, um, is meant to say that we are definitely going to do this. It is simply a way to
Mr. Committee.
create it so that we can do a little bit more work on it and get some information, pros and cons.
Yes, I just wanted to say we should, it needs to be, create a subcommittee to investigate pros and cons of withdrawing from Union Twenty-Eight.
Yeah, so I actually have, um, official language that we're, that we're gonna make the motion with. I just, for shorthand, had to put something on the agenda.
Right.
Um, but I do have language from, um, our attorney so that it can be done formally. Mark, do you wanna make the motion? I can hand this down to you, or do you not care?
I don't care. Just go ahead and read it. I can say, so mean.
Okay. All right, so, uh, vote on establishing a subcommittee to explore the potential for leaving, potential for leaving Union Twenty-Eight and possible alternative administrative structures. This, um, committee would include school committee members and members of the public um, for the duration of, uh, ending June twenty-twenty-four unless otherwise authorized. So, if they're doing great and they need more time, we would just authorize them to continue. If they don't need, if you don't need any more time, then the subcommittee would be resolved, uh, dissolved. That's what that means, that you just have to have some sort of end, end date.
Second.
I was in a little trouble by the way some of that was stated, but I'm not sure what I, I, not being able to read it, um.
I want, I want you to be comfortable with it. That's what our attorney suggested we have for wording. It's basically, the gist of it is that we wanna be able to have a subcommittee of school committee and stake, other stakeholders helping to investigate what it would look like, pros and cons, any information that would be important for us to know.
I guess I'd be, um, interested though to say, school committee, parents, and non-parents. I mean, written, non-parent residents.
So, public. It would be any, anybody in the public, parents or not, or not.
But I definitely feel like it should be parents on, wanted.
It's, yeah.
Yeah, as well as it might be to the advantage of not having, to have a few people who are not, but I don't want it too big. Well, we get to decide who would be on it. It's the, it's a school committee, subcommittee, right?
So, we would want to say like five members or six members or something like that, and then open it up to the public as to who would like to be, who would be interested in being on the subcommittee. Just like any other, I mean, just like other subs committees that are created in the town.
Well, so moved. I'm with it.
Okay.
We already got a second.
Yeah, we do.
It came first.
We do. So, again, this would go out as, um, an open subcommittee that people could, who are interested in it could, um, could join. Anybody have any questions from here?
I just would, would like to have Brian, our town administrator, on it. I'd like to have the select board who oversees the school committee. Is that Jim? Or whoever does it, and a couple members of the school committee, and maybe some members of the s- staff or parents. I mean, I, they think it's very important that we have our town administrator there and one of our select board members. This is a big move. We gotta cross our T's, dot our I's.
I think we can request that. I don't know that we can.
Try.
Put Brian on another committee. Um, he's spread pretty thin, but I, I think it's, I think you're, you're right. We need a, a wide selection of stakeholders. Put Brian on another committee. Um, he's spread pretty thin, but I, I think it's, I think you're, you're right. We need a, a wide selection of stakeholders.
I think if you have a subcommittee of individuals, they can turn to specific individuals and say, can you submit a written statement? Can you come to one of our meetings to express your opinions?
Right. It's more of a research committee in a way, because they would then come report back with findings and with information. So.
Exactly. Is, exactly. And, and exactly, Mark. You, you, you can ask whomever you want as you're back, backfiring or information gathering to give any information that others have. Can you just come right up to it?
May I make, I make a comment off this topic?
Uh, nope. Can I, hold on then. Let's, let's get through with this then. Um, any other questions or comments about that? No? Okay. So, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Excellent. All right. So, we will get that out. Um, I know, Mark, you were interested in it, so I'm looking for you to be the, our school committee representative on that.
Open your mouth.
Yep. Look what you did. Um, all right. So, that's all I have on the agenda for this school committee meeting. Um, our next meeting is Sept- I know you want to talk, yep.
I'm sorry.
Yep, I'm not, I'm not forgetting you. Uh, next school committee meeting is September nineteenth at seven o'clock. That will start our, back to our normal rotation of the third Tuesdays at seven o'clock. Not to say there won't be things that pop up that we need to have, like, like today, a meeting that's, we have to get some timely things done. But, um, but the hope is that we will stay, you know, that we'll only need those, uh, monthly, um, seven o'clock, third Tuesday meetings.
So, I would really like to encourage your policy committee to bring forward the preschool policy, whatever it may be. And I have done this in the past so many times, I can't tell you. I really would like that preschool policy to say universal services for all children who are eligible to come
Yes.
and who want to come. It's really a shame. Thank you for agreeing to the second classroom, but it's really heartbreaking to hear you talk about waitlists in, in our town with the budget that we have. So, I don't know how to encourage you to rewrite that policy. I don't have it. Um, can you tell me where that might be available?
It's online. Yep.
It's online.
If you go to theirving.com, go to school committee and the policies.
I've done this fifteen and twenty years ago at school committee meetings. Mackenzie's been around. Other people have
Yep, I remember.
gone along in their school committee career. But really, it needs to be universal services for all kids who wish to come.
Mm-hmm. Um, so I want to encourage you, um, Rinky, that the policy committee meeting meets half an hour before our school committee meeting on, on September nineteenth.
Got it.
So, that would be a great, a great time. Um, Mark, I don't want to forget what you're, you had suggested. I'm
We can put it off to the next meeting?
Yeah, I think Um, I think if you're okay, I'm gonna table that till the next meeting.
Got it.
Okay. Uh, anything else that we need to discuss? Okay. Thank you all for coming out.
Make a motion.
This was a great, super fast meeting. Yes.
Yeah. Make a motion to end the school committee meeting, uh, at five thirty-one.
All right. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.